What do you mean to the Lord and to the Republic for which he stands? What a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Can I roll call please?
Mr. Vander.
Here.
Dr. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Gerber.
Here.
Mr. Hannigan.
Here.
Mrs. Mullins.
Here.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have two additions. 9.3.10 Randy Robinson's your high assistant football coach. And 9.3.11 Amanda Fenty substitute.
Any other additions or corrections? Go entertain a motion.
No moves.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Mr. Vander.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullins.
Aye.
Okay, item two, the chairman philosophy. I just want to remind everybody that the things we do, decisions we make here, do them as if there was a student sitting in that chair. We'll go to item three, the student staff presentation. Stugoe Daniel Howell, I believe he's at football practice most likely, maybe not at every department. Okay. We'll go to item four, public comment for agenda items. I have one. Mr. James?
Um, where is it? Kind of curious on what the way to GPA is and how, um, I've talked to some other senior parents and they're kind of against it too, depending on what it's for and everything. My thought is it's like a basketball game getting to the fourth quarter, changing where three pointers that have already been taken count for four points instead of three points. And it's just, at this point, for the seniors and probably even the juniors, it's not fair, I guess. Cause they, we've already got to the point where they had their, if they could go back in time, they might would take some college classes to compete for valedictorian or whatever, but they just kind of played by the rules that were set forth for them when they began their high school careers. So, we're kind of, I guess, against it. And I've talked to some other senior parents and they were against it too, so. That's all I have.
Okay. The order of items, it's going to be discussion item here later. If the board can give us some information, I think we'll, you gotta stick around.
Yeah.
We will delve into that. We'll just go around here to item five. Dean, an activities director report. Mrs. Morgan, welcome.
Thank you. Um, actually, the first thing I want to do is I did preach you guys off the all sports schedules. These are out of today, the right dates, the right time and the right places. So, we would love to see you there. Also hoping that all of you have checked your SWING email. You should have a Chasse House in those, um, SWING emails. And, um, so we have our all sports meeting on August 4th. We had a great turnout. It was pretty much standing room only. The points that were focused on was eligibility, grades, and the opportunity to do alliance learning if someone was struggling with grades. Um, we have added a social media clause, which we really want to take seriously and focus on that. And athlete concerns and how to address them with coaches and how parents can address them also and the place and time to do that. Um, our sports number, we have 23 girls right now playing volleyball. Uh, we did end up with 15 high school football players, um, and 11 golfers from six different schools. Um, and on a positive note, we had 21 boys show up for junior high football meeting. So, and their parents. So, it was, we had a good group. Everybody's turned in their paperwork. They've done the concussion training or concussion testing. So, even though we might be a little low in numbers, um, a big group of those 21 boys were eighth graders. So, that looks good for the, uh, high school football program going forward. Um, we did concussion training and between Stacy Davis and I, uh, we had 83 kids that we tested on Thursday the 7th. Plus we had a few out of town. I think we've done four or five more. So, we're probably close to 90 kids that did do their concussion training. Not training, testing. And, I'm gonna say training, but it's testing and that's for all high school athletes. And we did ask the, um, junior high and high school boys to do it also. Um, and yeah, that's it. So, we're super excited. Yay.
Any questions?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Any questions?
The concussion testing, so you establish a baseline.
Yeah, and it's kind of, um, it's, they do it on their Chromebooks and they'll have like a scribble, literally. And then a different scribble, a different scribble. And then you kind of have to pay attention to them. And then a little bit down the line, they're like, was this one of the scribbles? They'll do that with words. You'll get random words and then they're like, oh, was this a word? Was this not a word? The funny thing is, is that, um, somehow it can tell if you are messing around. I swear to goodness gracious, we had about eight that had to redo it because they came back invalid. Um, there's also a part where it's like a red square and a blue square and you have to hit a certain button. And if it pops up, either gotta hit the left or the right. So, in order to go back and play a sport after you have had a concussion, we now have a baseline. And then you have to retake that test and until you can get to your baseline, you are not cleared to play. So, it just makes sure that we are keeping these kids safe. We are keeping these kids healthy. You know, I think the biggest concern is, um, football, obviously. Uh, the high school did get, and I'm sure you've talked about it, the, um, football helmets from the Denver Broncos. And those things are like really sharp and really well made. So, we're just hoping to keep everybody happy. Any other questions?
The trainer, have, uh, you guys have a chance to look at the trainer yet?
Yep, she came to the meetings, um, for the parents and, um, she knows her shop. I feel like she's gonna be a really good asset. She sent us a schedule and she's trying, if there's a combined game between us, Rocky Ford and Fowler, she'll be at those games. And she's at like three of our home football games, a handful of our volleyball games. She'll be here once a week and then Rocky Ford once a week, Fowler's doing two days. And because Rocky Ford and SWING are so close, we felt like if there is a major someone needing to go get evaluated, we can zip them over to Rocky Ford or Rocky Ford can like same thing. So that we really are getting two days, but we're each paid for one day because we're close enough, we can share. Um, and she talked to the parents and actually I've reached out to her. She is going to, um, wants to meet with, uh, Dr. Morley and the hospital board representative about really making sure we use all our options here before we look at things outside the valley. She has some connections, but I'm not sure she realized that we do have, um, an orthopedic surgeon close whose child happens to go here. Um, and we do have a hospital board member whose children also happen to go here. And so I reached out to her and she's like, absolutely, let's get to, so we're gonna figure out a date that they can get together to make sure we're utilizing, you know, the availability of what we have in the valley. Um, and so we're excited to have her.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we did talk to the Windsor, again, he's like the big old muscle guy. And it's like, I literally about cried when I, we were all losing her. They loved her, she did a great job and her main focus is to get those kids healthy in that plane. So, yeah.
Can I add something to hers or is it?
Sure.
We got the two new Aedes too. And she got them for half price at her conference. And they came with these hard shell cases. And so junior high football and high school football will each have.
They're on ADE.
For the season. And then those will travel. Um, eventually our old ones are aging out and I can't get pads anymore, but until then we'll have some extra ones.
Yeah, I went to the Chasse training and they were like, we have 10, they're half price, first 10 people. And so I'm, do we want these? Do we want these? And then I get there and Larry and Stacy are coming back and forth. They're like, we have two. And we didn't even realize that they came with the hard shells because those are like another hundred dollars each. So, we really got the half price Aedes plus the, uh, hard shells for free. So, we were super excited about that. And they, you just sign up and they bill Janelle, our dear sweet, uh, mommy with the money and she could take care of those for us. So, yeah, we're excited about that too. Okay?
All right.
Aye.
Okay, item six, express report. Mr. Smith.
Um, so back in July, July 23rd through the 25th, Mr. Leiter and I, uh, went to the case conference. Um, I feel like this has been the best case conference I've been to, um, with the workshops that I was able to go to, the keynote speakers that came, uh, thought it was very beneficial. Uh, it felt like the theme of the conference was kind of centered around cell phones and students. And, uh, we had a great keynote speaker the first night, our first day. Uh, it was a neuroscientist who studies just how screen times and cell phones affect, uh, humans, not just kids, but all, everyone. Um, so that was very insightful. Uh, was able to go to like some rural leadership workshops, um, supporting struggling teachers, um, policy and practice on lessons of implementing a cell phone policy. And then got some more information about post-secondary and workforce readiness and what CDE is trying to do with that as well. Um, we are going, I know I said this last, back in June, I believe, that we are starting, um, committees for new curriculum for social studies and writing. Um, hopefully we can get on that this year and then have something ready for next school year. We just want to make sure we do all that right and get all our stakeholders, uh, input on that type of curriculum. Uh, enrollment, so enrollment is up. Uh, right now Kinder has 28, uh, new students. We graduated 26, so having two more there. And then we have 35 new students coming through these doors. Um, so just kind of doing a little bit of the math, I was explaining to the teachers during our meetings today, that's roughly 20% of the students coming through these doors next Monday will be new students. Um, so just being ready and welcoming during that time. So, very excited about that. Um, last week, August 5th and 6th, we had registration. Uh, quite a few showed up for that. Um, tomorrow we have our first kind of professional development for staff, first thing in the morning from 8 to 12. Um, I'm not gonna say this guy's last name, I couldn't say it all day today, but Eric from ASDEP, um, he's coming in and he is a behavior interventionist. Uh, he's a leader in trauma-informed discipline and education. So, hopefully getting some tips on how to handle certain behaviors in the classroom and different things like that. He will be meeting, if it's kind of optional for our teachers, from 1 to 4, if they want to come in and just talk to them kind of individually and some things that they can work on, um, if they're struggling with certain things. So, more of an individualized type thing. Uh, August 13th, this Wednesday, we have back to school night from 5:30 to 7:00. Um, everyone is welcome. We have kindergarten orientation from, at 5:30. And then we will be doing a sixth grade orientation this year. Uh, was able to talk to secondary teachers and get a lot of insight of what we need to provide in that orientation, what they feel will be best for those sixth graders, which was very insightful. And that's all I have right now.
Question? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Item seven, superintendent report.
Um, I did put our new bus out here that we just got two weeks ago. So, if you guys want to check it out at our meeting or go for a spin, we don't need to do that. Um, the inhabitants of problems getting registered because now we wait on them. You have to have a DOT number and we don't have one, so we're struggling with federal government. I'm trying to get that because some of our names and things don't match and it's kind of, we'll get there. It's got a tip tag till the 20th of September, so it's good for a while. All buses and vehicles did pass inspection, but I have issues this summer, so should be good to go. Um, we did our annual driver training, our performance testing this morning, um, after breakfast. Um, both drivers did really well. Interviewing the sub driver tomorrow afternoon, so that picked up things up a little bit. Um, next thing I have is Casby's regional three meeting in Lamar on Thursday the 28th. Now Diana told me that she couldn't go play volleyball game. I'm about to, I'm gonna mention that.
Do what?
I don't know, yeah, it's my favorite, so I will unregister this for it. You guys, I'm sure have heard that Governor Polis called a special session start for the 21st, um, as well as the state hiring freeze, um, starting on the 27th, um, to address the $750 million budget shortfall that the state's gonna have. Um, he said they're gonna do everything possible to protect K-12 education, but I see them, they send the state funding law and we possibly losing some money. So, we'll be following that to where that goes. Um, I did lay out there in front of you, um, what we worked on with, um, the wrestling coaches and Craig Summers as far as the redesign, um, of the old gym. The wrestling coaches were very pleased with the additional space in the wrestling room, um, the layout of it. So, that's kind of the design we're gonna go forward with and do prices except to.
In the east locker room there, uh, is that new plumbing? Or is there already?
Yeah, that will be.
I don't think it will have to be, yes.
Yeah, with as bad as the plumbing is in there anyway, and a whole gym to, I don't want another water leak when we got everything up. I'm not sure engineers will tell you for a second if you're going to work. Speaking of water, our hot water tank is across from Snowage Room in that closet. Um, it's one of our main ones. It actually provides hot water in the kitchen. It is going out. Bottom's starting to rust out. It's to the end of 17 with our great water out here that doesn't take long. And, um, just to let you know, the water tank itself is over $10,000. Like to the end of 17 is $8,000. Do what?
We should buy two.
Save, save one for the future, huh? The Colorado Rural School Alliance is having a Rural Means Opportunity Strategic Action Committee in October up in Denver. Um, it's actually replacing our Fall Superintendent's Conference for the Western State, so it's just gonna be a day long on a Friday planning for advocacy for rural schools, so I'll probably go to attend that. Petitions for the election did, uh, open up last Wednesday. We had six petitions picked up, um, so we might actually have a board election direction. Promised. Little house fences, I don't know how old they are, but posts are all rotting off the bottom because they were wood, just stuck right in the dirt. Every time we go through a windstorm, one of them breaks off and we've got metal posts facing some of them and others were double wood posts. So, I'll see if I can get some quotes or something, I'll let it take to help this. Last thing I have is, um, taking any kind of suggestions on how to go about auction law, the alliance lettering, the council. I think he has the ideas on that. Can I entertain any questions?
Questions? If I'm ordering clothes to, uh, Austin House.
They haven't sorted that yet. They want me to give the design in first and then the specific process.
Any other questions? Okay, no more questions. We'll move on to board reports, 8.1, the BOSI's Board Recruitment.
Yes, uh, San Fe Trail BOSI's did host another, um, dinner meeting, um, for prospective, uh, board, uh, election interests. There were a number of, of, uh, people there. Um, Casby came down and presented a kind of a thumbnail sketch of what, um, board responsibilities are and legal things. And it was very, very informative to all of them. They were happy with it and great questions. Um, myself and, um, a board member from, uh, La Hanta and, um, one from Shaw's sat on a panel and asked some specific questions. Because the boundaries of the, our neighboring districts are so unique, um, some, some were, they weren't quite sure where, um, they could be able to take their petitions because it has to be a resident of that district. And, and because you can be five miles away from, from here in SWING and be in our district or you can be half a mile and not be in our district. So, it's kind of confusing. So, they had some kind of interesting questions about that. But I think all and all the people that were there probably had taken petitions out. So, um, I think it was very worthwhile. And I thank the San Fe Trail BOSIs for, for inviting Casby and providing the dinner and refreshments. It was, it was a very informative evening. Appreciated their work.
Okay. Thank you. We move on to item nine, the consent agenda. 9.1, approval of minutes. 9.1.1, July 14th, 25 regular meeting minutes. 9.2, the approval of financial claims. One day at $123,000, 336.56 cents. 9.3 personnel. 9.3.1, Dan Hill, high school head football coach. 9.3.2, Rick Dell, high school assistant head football coach. 9.3.3, Randy Robson, high school football volunteer. 9.3.4, Anthony Oliver, high school football volunteer. 9.3.5, Laura Nando, the resignation from high school wrestling. 9.3.6, Jason Norick, high school head wrestling. 9.3.7, Logan Harrison, custodian. 9.3.8, Brandon Mills, resignation from high school baseball. 9.3.9, Stacy Bandoni, classroom volunteer. 9.3.10, Randy Robson, junior high assistant football coach. And 9.3.11, Amanda Fenty, substitute. I will hear Dan motion.
In the year since July, paying, uh, financial claims for Hyde, which the governor, the bus came out of there, $220, some thousand dollars for city insurance was comped, just all the annual July bills, it's all at once. Yeah, and just to think, Janelle wasn't even here last month. She's just with that kind of thing.
Are those BOSIs or?
Um, move to approve.
Second.
Rush for the second. Further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Vander.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullins.
Aye.
We move on to 10, new business. 10.1, CD number 53569 renewal.
Uh, this is one that we have at First National Bank. Uh, I did reach out to them to see what they would do it at. It's currently at 4%. Uh, the maturity value next, Sunday, Sunday the 17th to Monday, is $318,584.37. Um, it's currently at 4%. They said they would do another five month at 4% or 11 month at 3.7%.
At 3.7?
3.75. My recommendation with the continued, um, support that the bank gives us that we do leave it there at First National. Um, are, do you have the other one that's coming due in November? Uh, I would move, we just go at the 5%, or the 4%, excuse me, for the five months.
Thank you for a second.
Move to motion. And a second? Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Vander.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullins.
Aye.
10.2, the mock trial extracurricular activity that, uh, was presented to us last month. Go ahead. Oh, I would recommend that, um, you go ahead and try it for this first year or see how that would seem to be of interest.
I've talked to a few people and I think they'll have quite a bit of interest. Yeah.
I've heard some of the people talking before. Yeah. The question, one question I did have is what kind of sponsorship stipend to give to them?
Is this an all-year activity or?
I don't think so.
So, like a quarter worth, a half a year?
I'd say more than a half, probably.
Okay.
I think, I think the timeline is in there.
Yeah, it's like through March. FBLA, FCLA, that kind of time.
I would say less because those are full year.
Okay.
Um, just to kind of give you what some of the other things are, FBLA and FCCLA are those 1750. High school knowledgeable is 1750 as well. National Honor Society is like 350.
It almost be comparable to, uh, knowledgeable really in a way.
There's only two, there's only two competitions.
We have two competitions with this one.
But it's like eight or dozen. Over the top of my head is that 60% of that. It's kind of what I would.
60% of the.
750, 7,000.
I think we need to be a little flexible about this, just something that, that takes a lot of time. We need to be able to, it's a good deal, we don't want, we don't want to lose the sponsorship act. Right. It's like, just the time.
We'd be the only school in the area with this right now?
My knowledge.
Instead of mostly front range?
Yeah. Big school. We need big schools.
And we confirm. Motion.
Offer.
Well, the motion to approve it, it also put the stipend.
Um, I would motion to approve it and set the stipend at $1,000.
Okay. And then after the first year, three months.
All seconded.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Get to be that guy that you might just tend to, get a brief, keep track of your time, just, I don't know, for sure.
Jekyll and Hyde, so you kind of work there.
Roll call please.
Mr. Vander.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullins.
Aye.
10.3, the Art Valley Counseling Services contractual agreement.
This is to provide, um, counseling to some of our more severe students. Um, it is paid for out of the BOSI's SHP grant, um, so it doesn't cost the district anything. They actually have one of their counselors coming on Tuesdays, going with these kids. Going into it for a second here.
Worked out well last year.
We worked out well, well, actually, okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Vander.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Mullins.
Aye.
10.4, staff meal prices.
Well, this is an agenda item. Just to remind you, if we, it's about $750 an employee, they eat lunch every day. Um, all employees aging about 40,000 plus, by the time you got benefits on top of it, because it is an IRS, um, incentive benefit. So, the employees would also have to, to report it on their income tax.
So, they just have to report if they use it then?
Yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't just be a tax cost.
Correct. We'll do a little bit of accounting back there.
I like to see if it could do it, but I understand the cost of it because I think it would be a great thing for our staff, whether their teachers are classified or whatever, to be able to not worry about it. And some of them will use it, some of them won't.
Right.
Yeah. If there's some way we can work it out maybe later on. And we talked about a trial period, maybe one month towards next spring, just offer it up, see what our response is. That's what I like to do is table it until then. And, uh, that way we get some numbers on it and then we can make a decision as soon as we're there.
Sounds good. We'll probably do that in May, since that's each appreciation.
Perfect appreciation.
I like that.
The motion to table it.
Do we need to set the price as we already do?
We've already set the price.
So, we don't need.
We set it at $4.50.
Second. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Malinsky.
Aye.
Ten point five, uh, declare bus number four, two thousand and four Bluebird, as surplus.
Pickfield bits, like we've done on the others.
Do we need to wait till that other one gets his D O T. number?
Not.
Oh.
For what you. They'll give you another.
They'll give you another check.
Okay, damn. First quarter.
You've got less than.
Is this, when you talk to other districts, the way most of them handle surplus buses? Just take bits? Strange to me, isn't it?
Just say, is there any other options?
Not a company that buy those.
I mean, you could try to turn them to and get anything for it.
Yeah. Could you do like an online option? Like the GoDeals?
Never done that before. Always done a couple weeks. Might work that company, Fowler, um, an off, option, online option company. I know Fowler's school district has been a lot for, you know, things. Do more publicity that way.
Yes, yes, and so, I'm sure I'd like to say, I suppose, I think, people lowball us, we're bad. That's taxpayer mind.
Do as much as you can.
Kids are keeping that. So, I entertain the motion, if you want.
Do this table until we see. About.
Let him look at the options, and he can run there.
That works out there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to look in. Yeah, I feel like some of those bits we did, it was like forty dollars.
It's not kind of. I mean, I can see somebody buying, turning it into an R P possibly, or. I know there's a front main school that had one, and they turned theirs into a food truck.
We can table. Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion to table, I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Malinsky.
Aye.
Ten point six, declare sixteen Windows ten laptops as surplus.
These were teacher laptops. Windows ten is no longer supported by Microsoft come October. Therefore, they would not be updated anymore with security, um, updates and all that. So we've already got teachers' new laptops this summer. And rather than us take them and pay to have them recycled, a recycling place sells them as well. Chips thought we'd just sell them ourselves.
This be the same situation as the bus?
No, we can do, I think fifty bucks is kind of what the second is. So move.
Motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Malinsky.
Item ten point seven, the intergovernmental agreement for the twenty-five coordinated election.
This is just the, the agreement between us and the county to halve elections. They're going to do the balance now.
We're between a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
And Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Malinsky.
Aye.
Do we do it all at once, or do we want?
Second, we can.
Okay.
Uh, don't we be ten point eight?
Ten. Yes. Update of twenty-five, twenty-seven Superintendent Transportation Director contract. That's Mr. Livers. Contract to be superintendent and our transportation, transportation director?
It is, just since we went to the teachers and got all theirs updated with legal, with all the state stuff in it, and undermined it as well. So it's been reviewed by the attorney involved, shared it out to everybody.
This is the twenty, twenty-seven?
Yeah, I'm on a two-year rolling contract.
Yeah.
Need a motion?
How do you motion?
Motion to update twenty-five, twenty-seven Superintendent Transportation Director contract.
Motion. Second. I have a second. Any discussion, questions? Everybody got the contract and the leaves? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Malinsky.
Aye.
Bear with me while I read through all of this. Ten point nine, second reading of policies. Ten point nine point one, J I C J, students' use of cell phones. Ten point nine point two, I J, instructional materials and library resources. Ten point nine point three, K E C, public concerns, complaints about instruction and library resources. Ten point nine point four, A C A, name changes. Ten point nine point five, J I C A, student registration. Ten point nine point six, J L C D, administering medications to students. Ten point nine point seven, J L C D dash R, administering medications to students. Ten point nine point eight, J I C B E dash E dash two, bully investigation form. Ten point nine point nine, J L D A C, screening testing students and treatment of mental disorders. Ten point nine point ten, K F A, public conduct on district property. Ten point nine point eleven, E F dash E dash two, civil rights complaint procedures for school nutrition program. And ten point nine point twelve, G B E E dash the staff use of technology.
Those were all June twenty-five special updates. When Casby do two legislative changes.
The student use of cell phones is, I think, kind of meeting our requirements.
It's meeting the requirements for what we have to have for policy in place.
And you guys just sat in on some case ones. Having done that, and seeing what we have there, how do you feel like we're doing with that policy?
Um, I think we need to make a stronger policy, so.
Agreed.
Agreed.
All the data and research out there from the sessions we sat through, um, just unbelievably overwhelming. I shared that YouTube video with you guys about the eighteen-year-old, and how many months they'll spend before ninety on their phones and screen time. Um, there's a lot of districts that are starting to go to those genre pouches. Kids put them in the first thing in the morning, just locked in there all day, and then they unlock it when they leave the building in the afternoon.
Is there a variety of levels of, of, you know, concentration where, you know, from no cell phones whatsoever to, you know, how does it range?
Some districts allowed to use it during passing periods, like at lunch. Um, others, they're gone all day long, so it's a fair range.
These, the schools that have, uh, went to these pouches, like, how long have they been doing it? Is this fairly new?
Um, there's, oh, there's, there's some schools that have been using for five years.
Okay.
Um, I sat in on a session with Aurora, middle school. They said their bathroom visits declined greatly. And, um, the kickoff speaker that Mr. Smith and I listened to, um, they said that digital addiction dependence now is greater than all the other addictions combined. UT did a, um, study, um, and it came back that we are less intelligent when our phones are visible. So they did a study of, um, a group, their phone shut off, but still laying there. Another group, their phones were in like their backpack. And another group, the phones were in completely different rooms. And they could tell that the ones where they could see their phone, their mental activity was not as high.
Did I screw my phone down there?
Well, mine in the trash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are you guys willing to come forward with something a little stiffer?
Yeah.
And that would, we have to put that into our code. Yeah.
Maybe.
I think we still need to approve this, because we've got.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah.
It's a basic requirement.
Yeah, so I'll move to approve.
We have a motion on second reading of policies. Give me a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Gerber.
Aye.
Mr. Hannigan.
Aye.
Mrs. Malinsky.
Aye.
Okay, we have, uh, item eleven, further comment for non-agenda items. There was none. So we'll just move on down to item twelve, discussion items.
Can I add one in before we get to twelve point one? Just a little.
Sure.
Comment. Uh, I don't think we've taken a moment to recognize Diana winning the BOSI's All-State School Board Award, and quite an honor, and I think we should recognize her for that.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you. I've outlived all my competitions, so. I've been so long at it that nobody else is around. I, I will say what an honor it was. Um, uh, Bill and I got to make the trip to Glenwood to the, to the Colorado BOSI's Association Conference. Um, had a very nice dinner, met all, uh, you know, the, the higher-ups in the BOSI's Association, and got to know, uh, a lot of people. Um, uh, it was a very proud moment for me. Um, uh, it has my name on the award, but what is more, uh, I guess, more of, of, of a, an honor is that it says Swink School District. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Want to close there?
I do have one on a discussion item, and I don't know what the rest of the board's thoughts are, but in the past, when we did have an election, we had a debate, we had.
I was wondering that, too.
We have, we haven't. I was just wondering if you guys were wanting to do something, if you guys wanted to reach out to the students and see if they wanted to maybe come up with some questions and help maybe, uh, run the debate. Uh, I don't get that's, if there's no interest, I'm okay with that, too. I just, it's something that's happened, and I thought, I'm sure you need to, uh.
Well, we got, what, five already, or?
Six.
Six, cool. I think, yeah, I mean, it gives the community an opportunity to come and meet together. You know, they might not be familiar with them and everything, so if we could arrange something, it would be nice. I, but I believe, but you can't hate a word, but.
I think a, a, an open forum.
Yeah.
Um, I would, uh, we've done these a number of times in the past traditionally. Mr. Jim Rosuto does a wonderful job facilitating that. I'm sure that he would be more than happy. Or a student involvement, like you said, those are all good suggestions. But, um, I think that would be a good way to, to introduce everyone to the community and, and let them speak on their behalf, inform the community, because that's where the voters are, so.
I, I would like that, I do, I was wondering that earlier. Uh, probably a good time to go over kind of the timeline of some of those, like, when are the petitions due?
Petitions, petitions are due the twenty ninth of August.
Okay.
Got through?
I hadn't thought about it, honestly. Um, sounds like a great idea, though.
Yeah, I thought, can we get into the past?
I think it's been eight years since we had an election, because that's when I got elected. We did it then.
Yeah.
Before that, I don't really recall.
You know where, when the ballots are mailed by October?
I don't.
So we probably want to do something before.
Before that, yeah.
Before that.
Before that, yeah, and you want it like end of September, sometime in October, first part of October. You know, look through, we'd have to look through the schedules. Uh, some of our sports, you know.
Don't, so they're not.
Kickin' off late. Yeah.
No conflict.
Yeah.
If you don't mind me, but tell me to explore.
Yep.
Reach out to, uh, Stugel, or.
Whatever. Both of those are good.
If you go, I might talk to Mr. Krueger about his government class.
Yes.
Maybe a good choice.
Mock trial.
Good, thank you. The rest did never come through.
Okay, we're going to go to twelve point one. Questions, comments, it's, uh, twelve point one point one, the weighted GPA. Uh, we do have a student here that we did ask to come and, uh, help present on some of this, their findings. Uh, I'm going to remind everybody, this isn't, uh, open forum to talk. We, we're going to let this person talk and be heard, and then I think we'll discuss it from there.
Hello, I'm going to stand here, because I want to talk to both of you guys. All right, so I sent all of you emails with this cheap paper. What would you like me to copy?
No.
You got one?
I have a couple, so.
Um, I'm just going to paraphrase it for all of you. Um, the system that I'm proposing is one that would allow students to choose between using a weighted GPA and an unweighted GPA, but only for scholarships and college applications. The valedictorian class ranking, nothing else would be, I guess, changed at all. Um, but the thing is, they'd be able to use their weighted GPA on scholarship applications and college applications, so that they have a higher chance of getting in. Um, the system that would be used is at the beginning of the semester, including at the start of the school year. A list would be compiled of all of the students that would like a weighted GPA. The system would briefly be switched over. The students that have, um, that want a weighted GPA on their official transcript, their transcripts would be exported and saved in the system, so that they can be pulled and used whenever. And then the system would be switched back to using an unweighted GPA, so that, you know, we can keep track of class rankings and valedictorians and stuff, especially for like senior and junior class, where that kind of gets competitive. Um, you can also choose to not use a weighted GPA in your transcript if for some reason you don't think that it makes you look good, or you just don't want to use one. Um, the other thing is that upon graduation, seniors would be provided with the option for their official transcript that is sent to colleges to be either weighted or unweighted. Um, just so that we can kind of keep that, if they sent the college weighted GPA for their, uh, admission, then they would have one on their graduation. Um, I think that Walter brought up a very good point of, we don't want to change this for the senior. We don't want to use to go to a weighted GPA for the senior class. Um, I, I don't want to be valedictorian. I am sure that everybody in my class would be very mad if their number one spot got taken just because we decided to change the system. So I don't want to change the system. I just want something to put what it says weighted GPA instead of a three point nine, because I don't feel like that represents me and what I've done. And it helps students get through the first round of robotic screening, you know, as we've discussed. Do you have more specific questions?
I think I understand the, the scenario you proposed, and my, my questions, follow-up questions are for the admin, not so much for you. I think, I think you've done a good job presenting, um, your vision of, of what we could do. And I appreciate your efforts on that.
All right, and I'd love to ask you questions from then. Do any of you have questions?
And thank you for giving us an alternative path to maybe solve the problem. We don't know if we can yet, but we appreciate everything you put into it.
Of course. Thank you all for listening to me.
Yes, thank you.
Um, I know I put this in my little letter thingy, but I would really, and I'm sure everybody else would really like it, not a decision, but a path forward, kind of decided on this soon, just because, you know, if we want this to be available for the senior class, then it needs to be kind of made available very soon. So, I think that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, if you guys have questions for admin, we can go ahead and do that.
Yeah, right. The fifty thousand foot view is, how, how feasible and workable is that solution? How's that? When the rubber meets the road, how's that?
Mr. Smith and Mr. Scher...
You guys are welcome.
And I visited last week. On the phone with GoEdgeStar today for a while, trying to find out more information. I think, I don't want to speak for them, but I think we're all in favor of weighted GPAs. It's just a lot more than flipping the switch that on GoEdgeStar. And Snowy can probably talk more about that in a moment. Some other things that I came up with and questions for ourselves to try to figure out is, when does a student have to decide? Their freshman year, or can they wait until their senior year decide? Can they go back and forth between, oh, I want to use weighted GPA on this, and non-weighted GPA on this? We did find out class rank is affected when you switch on certain students with a weighted GPA. It's gonna change their class rank on their transcripts. And there's no other way around.
Because of the way it's started?
Because it's, it's got the highest GPA first. Am I right, Snowy?
Yeah, you can't change one without the other. That's what we specifically asked. We specifically asked, can you make class ranking based on only on weighted GPA? And he said, no. Once it's, once you have enabled weighted GPA, it will always default to that, and you cannot turn it off.
So it's just universal for everything that's generated?
Yeah, once you, once you turn over that portion of GoEdgeStar. And I don't, I don't know why they have that function. Like, I don't know, you know, they follow a lot of regulations, so I'm not sure, you know, once the weighted GPA is enabled, then it has to default to that because of some kind of policies that they're following.
Turn certain students on with weighted GPAs and others not, but it's still gonna pick up that highest GPA and make that person number one?
Change the class rank.
And when we talked to GoEdgeStar, we talked to our representative, Ben, and he's very thorough, talked to us for a very long time, and his biggest concern was the transparency factor of manipulating GoEdgeStar and then being viewed by scholarships and by colleges. And that transparency factor of using their system, manipulating the grades, and then manipulating them back. He was really uncomfortable with that, to be honest.
Is there a way to generate two separate kinds?
Well, like she mentioned, you know, turn it on, generate it, export all of them to some kind of PDF or something on a desktop, change it back. I mean, that's the only way that you could produce two at the same time. The transcripts at the top do say weighted GPA, unweighted GPA, but you can't produce two separate transcripts for that.
Does the transcript list the class? I don't know that I've ever really looked at a transcript. It lists rank on the transcript?
Right below GPA.
So in that theory, we'd see multiple kids with the same rank?
Right now?
Who are not tapped into that, if we're turning it on and off.
You can't have student A and student B still being the same student in GoEdgeStar?
Is that what it's doing?
Yeah. Okay. Jennifer just got one, but we have two different GoEdgeStar accounts for her. Can you do that?
No.
Why would?
Like, we would have to... I guess you can duplicate the student?
You can duplicate it, and then when she wants to use this transcript to apply for a scholarship or into college, you use that?
Well, I'm not sure you can create two students with the same state ID number.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Because they have a state student ID number that's tied to it, and I don't know with GoEdgeStar, but I do all the state testing, and if I try to create two students, it rejects it at the state level. It tells me, you can't duplicate, it's the same student.
And that's where all of our student data reporting comes from, the state?
Could a student wanting that contact on their own GoEdgeStar to get that weighted GPA? Like, if she's like, here's my information, but I need this for the call, can they somehow individually contacted them to...
I don't know. I don't know either.
Have you guys tried to contact GoEdgeStar individually?
The problem is, is that it has my unweighted GPA, where it says underneath weighted GPA. So yes, I can go through and calculate a weighted GPA, and I'm sure that if I contacted GoEdgeStar, they could also help me calculate a weighted GPA. The problem is, it is just not on my official transcript.
And I'm submitting that to Common App, and to VETR, and to Daniels. I'm submitting it to corroborate whatever the student is submitting as well. And I'm using the official school record, pulling an official transcript myself.
Right. Snowy, do we send a school profile with every transcript?
Scholarships. Don't we have to...
For some of the larger scholarships, yes. Like VETR, I set up a school profile every year that asks, what's your, you know, top GPA, like, what's your scale? Do you wait?
But you don't send that with every transcript?
No, if a student applies for a college through Common App, I do. I do that on the backend, and that's the most common way that students are applying to larger schools, and some larger schools only, except that they do it through Common App. On that Common App?
On the, on the school profile?
Profile. I submit their transcript, I submit their class rank, I submit how many people share that class rank, I submit their GPA. They ask if we weight GPAs or not. And if we did weight it, I put the unweighted as well. And then, that's pretty much it. Not like student body size or anything. The class rank, you know, shows how big their class is. So basically, I'm putting their transcript on again in a different form.
And you're saying this is non-weighted?
I am. At that time, scholarships...
Have you looked at all transcripts and looked at the school profile that's been sent? Ever?
No.
To see what was included?
No, because it's not something that we print for their file. That would all be through Common App that I'm submitting those.
I see.
So it's all digital. So I don't have access to any of them before me.
Yeah, because it officially has to be sent from the school.
Yeah, I'm the school official for...
I understand that. I just, you know, historically, we've always sent a school profile with every transcript for a long time.
For colleges? Like, once they graduate or something?
Just when they're leaving and they're going to see you or whatever. We would always accompany every transcript, whether it was vocational school or was a school profile.
I don't think that's common practice anymore, but I could look back.
I don't know, I was just curious about that. Because, and I think what prompted that back then was that everybody, including Otero, was on a 10, 10...
Oh, we were seven.
Grade, and we were seven. And so it skewed all of the information that was sent to the colleges. So we, you know, we did it for a number of decades, where there was always a profile that accompanied every transcript to wherever it went. That sort of explained, but you have to remember the age then, you know, concurrent was, you know, fast-tracked, it was all new. So there was an explanation for that. And now, you know, peers, if you read the concurrent law and the, it's so gray, I don't see how you even function, how you even do it. So, I was just curious.
Yeah, we don't send that, like, a separate profile. We're just sending a transcript.
I see, okay.
And if you just addressed with GoEdgeStar about, so we have students that, on their transcripts, it shows that they were actually a high school student for sometimes five years or six years. Is there any way?
Oh, I see what you're saying. The grade, are you talking about when grade nine is listed multiple times? Or, sorry?
Well, when they take stuff as junior high students, seventh or eighth graders. I mean, can we get, can we fix that later on down the road? Would we change our policies and correct that? Have you addressed that issue with them?
The issue is that...
Not counting those, is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah. Because we've got to clear that up, and we've got to get that fixed.
Because right now, it says grade nine, grade nine. Like, it says grade nine, and then grade nine again.
Right. And so it, it looks like they were in high school a lot longer than they actually were. Have you...
I have not, but Kathy and I could work on that.
Okay.
The problem is, if we include eighth grade, we would need to, I think, we'd have to talk to Ben, but delete off the classes that were not high school, because then it would say grade eight, you know, science eight, math eight, social studies eight, all those. And so we would just need to double-check with them. That's a permanent record, so we would need to figure out how to duplicate the year to take some off.
If they're taking it in junior high, they're gonna have enough credits for later on in high school. So that's where we're, you know, that's down the road for future policy changes. But we need to see if we can get that addressed, or maybe we switch up to a different system that's more user-friendly.
But if you're taking like pre-或者 whatever in eighth grade, it just shows up in your transcript as a class. It doesn't say the grade you took it, does it?
It has. Yeah, it does. It's a grade nine, grade nine.
That's the nitty of the whole problem, is that it never was, and then it was. And now, now we're in this kind of limbo area. Well, if you're taking it, but you're not taking it twice in ninth grade, it's gonna show up that you were in ninth grade three years.
Would you like to look at my transcript?
It shows up as three grades, three freshman year.
And Mrs...
Which makes things really good.
Mrs. Schroeder was grade, because she switched it for us. We asked her to, and she did. It actually reflected worse when there was only one ninth-grade year, because it looks like she took...
20 hours.
Yeah, like, 12 classes for freshman year.
And it looks even worse.
Instead of breaking it up to see like, but it's grade nine, grade nine, grade nine, or seventh, eighth, and then actual ninth.
That's eighth grade unless it was in which term. So Snowy, when you talked at GoEdgeStar, did they have any suggestions?
We, honestly, we didn't bring that up. We were just looking at the weighted and unweighted GPA, a component of it, but...
They have another solution?
And I don't know, Kathy wishes she could be here tonight, but I'm not sure if she's brought that up in the past, and just not shared it with me.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, her and I have different expertise in GoEdgeStar. That's a little bit more her, but her and I talk to Ben together a lot.
Yeah, good. I just didn't know they, you know, understood the situation and...
And they have, like, changed things in GoEdgeStar for specific schools when they have needed it, and so maybe this is something we can put in as like a tech ticket that could be...
Oh, I see.
I don't know. We can brainstorm with them from here. It's a matter of making sure we don't change the permanent record of the eighth-grade year just to reflect that one class. You know, like, I think we can turn on a button that would display eighth grade through 12th grade on a transcript, but it would show all the classes that were not high school as well. And you can't just delete those classes off of a transcript, because if we ever need a middle-school transcript, we can pull that separate.
Without it being generated into the GPA or the local ones that are taken in junior high? Is that kind of the goal?
I don't know, restate that, sorry. I don't want to...
After we, after we implemented the policy, am I correct, that it started with an incoming freshman?
I have to manually go in and put that, so that it doesn't go into the deep, go into the black hole that is junior high once high school has started. So we pull that grade card, force it onto their transcript starting their freshman year, because otherwise that class would just disappear. Like, it's there, it's there in a junior-high transcript, but it's not there in high school. We have to force it onto the high-school transcript. It doesn't automatically carry over.
But, but we have been doing that, right? Forcing it on?
Yes. But when I go down, when I force it, and I go down to the dropdown, I say, okay, it was taken in the 25, 26 school year, but I can't, I cannot select eighth grade. I can only select nine, 10, 11, 12.
I see.
Yeah. That's why it shows up as ninth grade, but a different year, because it was taken in a different year. But I have to say it was ninth grade, because it does not give me the option of eighth.
So why, if it's taken in eighth grade, it is even an issue, the nine, 12 transcript?
Because it's a, that's a high school class. You have to take Algebra I before you take Geometry.
Well, isn't our goal to reflect nine, two, 12?
Because it was decided in, as of four? I don't know, it was decided a while ago. Something, we've looked at when it started appearing on the transcript.
Seventeen.
I don't know, I wasn't the counselor then.
I know.
So I don't know when that even started happening, but then it's been a standard ever since. And so it's just what we do. And it's in our student handbook and in our policy that Algebra I and Spanish are the two available ones to then be put onto the transcript for high school.
I mean, if you could figure out a way to do it without affecting everybody else's, I mean, that's the difference in the conversation. Because for me, I was under the...
Whole harmless everything.
Yeah, but conversation was the weighted GPA for the senior class, which, for me, I'm like, there's no way, that's not...
That's not, that was never...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That was never the intention.
So...
That would be a horrible thing to do to anyone.
Yeah, well, it just changes what they've been working on the last few years.
It's unfair, and that's changing. It's exactly what Walter said. And that was never, just so that everybody in the room hears it, that has never once been our intention. She got to be in a high-school class, we get it, it's fine. We would like her to have a weighted GPA option for scholarships and college applications.
Yeah. So I don't know, I mean, the thing, what I guess I was saying is, if you can figure out how to do that individually to benefit that child, then I, you know, I get that portion of it. I just don't know if it's feasibly, if you can be...
But then it turned, to me, it turns into, it turns into a game. If I'm ranked number one with a 4.0, and I choose to turn on my weighted GPA, I could effectively be taking away my number-one rank but adding over a 4.0. So then, as an 18-year-old, I have to decide, do what's more important to me? The number-one ranking, which allows me to apply for the VETR and for those large scholarships, or over a 4.0? That is a big gamble and a big game, and that's a, that's a big decision.
I think you're thinking about it different than I am. I mean, you're still a 4.0 student, so your class rank wouldn't change. You'd still be valedictorian. But if you wanted to apply for the VETR, you could use the weighted GPA.
If ever, sorry, you know what I'm...
Well, my biggest concern when we were talking to Ben about this was, we have to remember, this is a legal document.
Right.
Okay. And I understand what the gardeners were saying and why they want to do that, but the holdup on all this comes to that class rank. We cannot switch off the class rank. That's the biggest issue in this. It's not one thing, and then everyone keeps there. So even if we switch for certain students in our senior class to the weighted GPA, that class rank's gonna change. So when they are applying for scholarships or applications or something along those lines, how they would like to use this transcript, because I know how the gardeners were, well, what about some of these other seniors? How would they like to use their transcripts? Then we're sending, we say, to CSU Pueblo, since they're just down the road, multiple, and it's all over the place. We have different, the school, it's not credible.
It's not showing fidelity with the number...
The transparency issue of CSU Pueblo, if they come to me and say, your transcripts look really weird, because we got some that were weighted, some were unweighted, and we explained the situation, that's an odd thing to explain to a college, that we just flipped it on and we flipped it off, and we changed it, and it's not even based on our valedictorian. I'm, I'm not sure what the perception and the reputation we would be building to the colleges and to these huge scholarships that depend on our ethics to give them transparency.
Is it ethical to rank a kid sixth?
It really...
It's fine.
It just comes down to the ranking. I know that they're not wanting the whole valedictorian, and I understand that, and we're trying to work through that, but we have a legal document here that we cannot, I think we want to customize it a certain way, but unfortunately, we can't customize it the way that we would like it. Because their policies as GoEdgeStar and those things, and probably whatever agreements they have with the state, CBE and so forth. And, yeah, so it's just one of those things that we have to be kind of aware of, and those types of things.
Could you not submit two transcripts with an asterisk saying, "Our school does not weight GPAs, but if our school did weight our GPAs, this is what it looks like"?
Like, as an individual student?
Yes.
Nothing stopping you? Nothing stopping a student from submitting that?
Could the school do this?
Continue back to that official document.
Well, that's, we're not hiding anything. We're submitting both of them.
But we're saying, our school doesn't weight the GPA, but we did it anyway.
Don't you have to come out like this much?
An unofficial transcript with this information? I think so.
We're showing credit for the work that they did.
We're concerned about getting automatically screened from these things, and those things are not gonna read our explanation of why we sent the unofficial transcript for, like, I think you're still gonna get automatically screened, because your official transcript you submitted still has those concerns. I don't know that it solves that portion of the problem to go back. I mean, I think if, if you can get in front of a, an application... I mean, I think if, if you can get in front of a, an application committee and explain the situation, I think you're going to do very well in that situation because you're very well spoken. You've got an excellent case of why this is an outlier, but getting past that automatic screening is, is the problem.
Will Jennifer submit a college, like an Otero one, then also?
Yes.
Transcript, so, and will you use both of those for scholarships?
Yes.
So you're still getting those college credits and then showing that, how well you did in the college class?
Yeah.
Any more questions, discussion? Do we? I continue, we're kind of on a timeline here as Ms. Gardner said. I hate to see the board get this down the road further.
Can I just give a suggestion? I do feel like you just, like Mr. Leiter said, we have, all of us would agree that we need to go to a weighted GPA. But there is policies in, because we do not want to make this concurrent specifically the Wild, Wild West where if we were to change to a weighted and then everyone wants to get all these college classes and so forth to it, and then that will shoot our, like, we won't have any electives then if that was the case. Like, no one would be taking electives here at the school, it would all be at the college. I think there's a lot of policy throughout this time that we can't. I believe right now at this time of what we've talked about with Ben and this whole switching and how this, I don't think we could do anything at this time, unfortunately. But I do feel like this is an opportunity where we can look at for the future of SWINK and how we can change those things. I hate to say that, and all the gardeners don't probably like hearing that as well, but I don't, I don't know what else to say. We've been talking about this for almost a year now.
Well, and you'd have to get it into policy, and that's going to take, how we read it.
Yeah.
Come up with something, so then you're looking at three months ago, right? Two readings at about? So getting it done quickly just is maybe not feasible in a school or a center.
What would the board like the administration to do moving forward?
We've got to continue to explore options, I think, but for right now, we cannot do anything tonight.
Right, that's what I'm saying. The next is to put this on, agenda, your business.
Yeah.
My takeaway from this is I feel like I understand the problem. I don't see a functional solution to it. I would also echo the decision to evaluate implementing a weighted GPA, probably starting for this year's seventh grade class when they get to high school, so. You know, not taking effect for graduate classes for five years. But whatever actually happens with that, we're pretty much looking like that final reading I won't be here for, so that's more of a, this is. Yeah, I think we need, you know, something for the future. I don't think it's feasible to implement now, but I think we need something of real strict guidelines of how it's going to work. We need it laid out completely, I don't know if, you know, Cassidy has something we can base it off of, but I think something pretty black and white without any gray areas.
Mrs. Moore, again?
That's fine.
Well, I understand everybody's reservations about enacting something this year. I see it a bit of a crime that when I hurt some kids. I wish there was a situation here where there was no harm done. I don't think in the past that we have been consistent on what we are doing on these classes from junior high to high school. And it troubles me a little bit that we're under all light in the sand here on this one. So I would still like you guys to try to explore something. We need, we need to keep looking for an answer, for a solution for something. Because we're not here to hurt these kids, we're here to help these kids and help all of them the best way we can forward. And I just, I'm a little troubled that we're just going to stand here and say, well, this is the best we can do. That's where I stand on it.
So, any more discussion? I'll entertain a motion, could you?